I'd like to invite everyone to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Ian Collier.
Here.
Craig Koschel.
He's out there.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Pollock, here.
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 You all emailed a copy of the minutes from our October 18 meeting. Have any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Motion to accept them is emailed.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. First thing is a matter of record that we need to make for the appointment of Nathan Hirely as, no?
Matt Schultz.
Yeah, Matt Schultz as the Assistant Operations Manager. And that's Matt Schultz. That went into effect on the 30th, yes, a couple days ago. So if I could have someone make this a matter of record.
Sure. Move.
Got a Wiley motion and a Cam second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Is there more than one Matt Schultz?
Not on the city payroll.
Okay.
This is Fred and Ann Schultz's oldest son.
Okay, I know a Matt Schultz from Gold Shield, that's why.
Different one. Okay. Item one down. Next thing, in talking to some of the staff members here and referring to job descriptions, I discovered with Phyllis's help that our job descriptions for all of our employees were written in 1993. And things have changed a tad bit since then. So Phyllis and I and Wendy met with a company called New Focus HR. Very, very friendly people, very professional. They are just finishing up doing the same thing for the city of Bluffton. They've done Portland. I mean, they can give you countless referrals. And I would like to go ahead, like I said, with Phyllis and Wendy and I, Phyllis and Wendy are the ones that probably use these as much as anything, would like to go ahead and sign a contract for them to do this. Their rate would be, there would be a review and a continued development of the organizational charts that they would use to guide the job description project as outlined. And that would be at a rate of $140 an hour with an estimated three to five hours. After that, then, the development of each job description, which they predict after we went through all the job descriptions that we have right now, that we would probably have 40 to 45 legally compliant job descriptions, they would be $100 per job description. So altogether, we would probably be a little over $5,000 to have all of our job descriptions from top to bottom completely brought up to date. In addition to that, they also do employee handbooks, consulting services, et cetera. As these job descriptions change over the years, for $140 an hour billed to the nearest half hour, they'll do consulting work and changes to the job descriptions. The employee handbook, we're not going to pursue it this time because the one we have is not that old. However, as Tim suggested, we might ask them if they would just review it and see if there's things that they think, you know, we should modify for a fee. Their rate to do an employee handbook is $2,800. However, like I said, I don't think we need to do that, but we might modify the one we have, just have them review it. But for now, like I said, just job descriptions is what we're looking to do. And that'll probably run us a little over $5,000. They actually come in, talk to all the employees, ask them what they do, the employees take a survey. Am I right, Phyllis? They actually take a survey with them.
Questionnaire.
It's a questionnaire. And from that, they build the job descriptions. And it seems like a very reasonable price to make when you compare them to what we have paid them, I mean, like, first doing our ordinance book. Yeah.
Very detailed.
Very detailed. And...
How often are the job descriptions looked at?
Well, I've emailed several other mayors to ask them, who's done your job descriptions? And what, I mean, it's surprising how many other communities are like us, and we need to do it.
But once it's done, do we ever like to pull that document back out?
Well, Ann actually does. That's a good question. Ann keeps hers...
I've updated mine, but mine, I know the company, what they write will was nothing like what I've got.
Right.
Like she said, it will be a legal job description. You read that, you don't even know who it is in the city that's doing it.
I don't know when you read these that she presented to us, I thought they were very...
Yeah, they're pretty, what she does is...
I have the employee actually writing.
If you had an example of something they wrote, but...
But the employee's actually going to write them, and then she just takes it from there.
Yeah. From the survey that she gives each employee, she'll...
I remember back in 93, they had all those funny stuff about twisting your wrist, how far you have to reach, and I think you have to have some of that.
You have to have that, also how much you, how much weight you're...
But yeah, I keep up on ours.
So it's really to protect us from a legal standpoint?
Absolutely.
It is.
Mine is more probably detailed than it should be.
We need to do it from a legal standpoint.
Yeah.
I highly recommend that you do it.
And if an employee gets hurt on the job, it also protects you as far as when to bring them back if they may no longer be able to complete the job because of the job description. You know, but here you have something legally to...
How much influence is the department head's going to have on it? Plenty. Okay.
And that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. If he can't, if he doesn't have the say of what's going in the employee's job description, then we're wasting our time, but, you know what I mean?
I think in her contract, I think she talks about visiting with each employee.
Okay, sure, they will have a chance to look at it.
And they have to sign off on it.
So $5,000 expenditure comes out of what?
Phyllis?
Where do you have that money?
I'm going to look for it. I'll find it.
I mean, I think the other thing that we have to talk about performance evaluation, how you can get to an evaluation if you don't have a standard to...
You have to have a benchmark to weigh them against.
Correct.
Because I have professionals, so that's it for the code book, so if I have extra in there, this one covers that.
A lot of the discrimination and non-discrimination clauses and stuff, getting what I said, your hands are untied on this.
Yeah.
I've come up to, we were straining sort of last four years.
It needs to be done.
You really don't have to.
Right. I make a motion to proceed with the hiring of this person.
I'll second that motion.
Have a Cam motion and a second from Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. Next, as a resolution, we want to deed the recently acquired Schaefer Building over to the Decatur Redevelopment Commission. Tim can briefly explain that, and then we'll hopefully pass this resolution.
Okay. Basically, in order to move money from the city to Kevin, it has to be done through the Redevelopment Commission. You can't just do it yourself. So, but the commission has a lot more flexibility, so you move money to the commission and the commission can work with the developer. So that's one reason. The second is that the, if you do it this way, then you don't have to get into issues about what may be charged for rent, because if you, if the city does it, you have to do an appraisal, and then you have to take the averages to appraisals, and you can't take into consideration the improvements that are being made by the developer, which the Redevelopment Commission can. So for those reasons, it needs to be adopted. In order to transfer, if you're, call, we did this a couple years ago with the lots out in Industrial Park where you have to adopt similar resolutions, one by the council, one by the Redevelopment Commission, to move the property from one to the other. And then that gives the Redevelopment Commission the ability to work with the developer. So that's the purpose of the resolution. It also authorizes the mayor, then, to sign the deed transferring the ownership, assuming that tomorrow night the Redevelopment Commission approves its resolution to accept the property. The Redevelopment Commission will then enter into a lease option with the developer. Kevin Biggs is the developer. He has to have site control over the area that's going to be leased or his parking spaces related to the Artis Lofts. That is tied to him getting the tax credit financing. If he doesn't, then the city has a right to terminate that option. If that happens, then the Redevelopment Commission would deed the property back to the city because the city's going to want to take down the building. Okay? So, and the timing of this is somewhat critical because council acts tonight, Redevelopment Commission acts tomorrow night, the deed gets recorded Thursday, we have to do an updated search by Friday in order for Kevin to submit his application by Monday.
Yep.
So all the dominoes fall into place, but we have to start the process here.
So the number is?
I don't, what's the next number?
Resolution number?
Seven.
Seventeen, resolution.
Why?
There it is. So would I have a motion to introduce resolution 2016-17?
Some with short title.
I have Matt making a motion to introduce resolution 2016-17 by short title. And a second from Cam. All in favor?
Aye.
Tim?
Resolution number 2016-17, short title, resolution of the County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, authorizing a transfer of interest in real estate to the Decatur Redevelopment Commission.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution 2016-17.
A motion from Cam, second, and a second from Wiley to pass resolution ordinance 2016-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you.
Please sign in the "I" column.
Next, then, is an ordinance for creating a non-reverting fund for the Pennsy Depot rental funds. Tim, explain that briefly, and then we'll move on.
This is a, if you call it your last meeting, you instructed me to prepare an ordinance to establish a non-reverting fund so that rental fees for the use of the depot could be deposited in there for construction, maintenance, repairs, improvements to the train depot and ancillary railroad structures. So if for some reason they put back the, put back together the platform or the loading dock or whatever, freight dock, that could be, these funds could be used towards that or for the maintenance of it as well. But in order for the funds to not go into the general fund, you have to create a depository for these funds to be held separately. That's what this does.
And I would think we could do all three tonight, couldn't we? If it's our pleasure.
If we have any other expenses on the depot, do we want to be out of there or does it count?
There would be, it would be, I mean, the council would have to approve any expenditures of these funds, but if there's insufficient funds here, it's probably going to have to come out of some of their account. So what's the next number? Ordinance?
Seventeen.
Also, 2016-17.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016-17 on its first reading by short title.
Second. A motion from Cam and a second from Wiley to introduce ordinance 2016-17 in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-17, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a non-reverting operating fund for construction, maintenance, repairs, and improvements to the train depot and ancillary railroad structures.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-17 on its first reading.
Second. Motion from Cam, a second from Wiley to pass ordinance 2016-17 in its first reading by short title. All in favor? While roll call vote?
Ian Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam?
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016-17 on a second reading by short title only.
A motion and a second. Cam and Matt, as it was, place ordinance 2016-17 in its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-17, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a non-reverting operating fund for construction, maintenance, repairs, and improvements to the train depot and ancillary railroad structures.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-17 on second reading.
Second. Have a motion from Cam, a second from Wiley to pass ordinance 2016-17 in its second reading. But ever will call vote, please.
Ian Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam?
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes. Make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2016-17 on its third reading by short title only. Second.
Motion from Cam, a second from Matt, place ordinance 2016-17 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Ordinance number 2016-17, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a non-reverting operating fund for construction, maintenance, repairs, and improvements to the train depot and ancillary railroad structures.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016-17 on first reading.
Second, Tim. Have Cam and Wiley motioning and seconding to adopt the ordinance 2016-17 in its third reading for adoption. All in favor? While roll call vote?
Ian Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam?
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 2016-17 has been adopted. Next is, every year at the holiday season, out of the kindness of the city council's heart, we, they have always given all employees $30 Decatur dollars as a Christmas present, and all part-time employees $20. And it's that time of year where we need to approve such. And is this the time last where you would come up and ask us about the part-timers or the volunteers? You've all been briefed on this already through the Board of Works meeting, so...
The volunteer firefighters have never been included in the Decatur dollars, and I thought it would be a nice gesture if they would be included as other part-time employees since, you know, they do offer a huge service and this might be a nice gesture for them. And as we talked earlier, that would eliminate the ones that are already on staff like Jeremy and Nathan Hirely and et cetera. Correct. So they can't, yeah, they can't double... They can't double dip, yeah. Yeah. And it would thus create about 21 extra part-time people if approved. Any discussion by council on this?
It'd be a nice gesture to do.
Okay, now, keep in mind, Phyllis reminded us earlier that should we do this, it's going to put the council's budget...
Your promotional...
Our promotional line...
Is used up for the year, but it is November, so that's not too big of a deal.
We have just one more month. I'll make a motion that we approve the request of the volunteer firemen, fire...
As part-timers.
As part-timers to receive the Decatur dollars as part-time employees.
Okay. A second. A motion and a second to approve the Decatur dollars and include...
Wait a minute.
Go ahead, Tim.
Before a vote's taken, Tyler probably should recuse himself.
Recuse himself for a conflict.
Tyler's brother is a volunteer fireman, so he'll recu, yeah, himself. So all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. The Decatur dollars will go out to all the employees and include the volunteer firemen.
Thank you.
Yep. We have an event form for the Decatur Holiday Open House, and that's pretty clear cut. Basically, they just want the lobby of City Hall to be open, is all they're asking. It's down at the courthouse, isn't it, primarily? It's all through downtown area.
Downtown and around town.
Downtown and around town on Saturday, November 19th, from 10 to 4:00. And just basically while people are shopping, they want to have the lobby open for restaurant use only. Yep. So if no discussion needed on that other than this, I could have a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the event request.
Second. Motion from Wiley, a second from Matt to approve the request. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. We did it. Tim?
No, we got one more ordinance.
We got one more, yeah.
On the agenda.
We have a handicap parking space on 7th Street that we have to handle, but it's only nine minutes.
Not on the agenda. It's what? Not on the agenda.
Just going to hurry. Okay, last meeting, there was a request made by a citizen in the community for a handicap parking space on 7th Street, so I have an ordinance prepared to accommodate that request.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
Does the person have a handicap sticker?
In their car?
Yeah.
Well, if they're going to use the space, they better.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's a violation of the ordinance.
They got a tag.
Yeah. What?
That's what I was told.
They have a handicap tag.
That's what you're right, I mean, if somebody parks and there's not a handicap tag, it can be cited for violation.
Let us know if they're not. We'll get them.
What is, yeah, let's park across the street.
Yeah. And that handicap spot, yeah.
Yeah, and so you know, it's on the east side of 7th Street and 115 South 7th Street.
And we, yeah, we've done this before, right?
Yes.
And it has, and so it's ordinance so that it gets into the...
It's included in the code so that it establishes the parking spot, because if somebody does violate parking there, you can't enforce it unless it's part of the code.
How do you remove that by ordinance again?
You do it again by ordinance. You just delete it.
Is this for two spots or just one?
One.
Okay. I think he's got both the vehicles tagged and the handicap.
You know, I asked for, and he requested to, and I informed him that if anything was included, it would be only one, and he still had to give me verification of the meaning.
Okay.
I will make a motion to place ordinance 2016-18 on its first reading by short title only.
I'll second it.
A motion from Cam, I'll take Matt's second. Place ordinance 2016-18 in its first reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2016-18, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-18 on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016-18 in its second ordinance first reading. All in favor? Excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Ian Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016-18 on second reading by short title only. Second.
A motion and a second to place ordinance 2016-18 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2016-18, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented.
Make a motion, sorry, where are we? Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-18 on second reading. Second.
Motion from Cam, second from, who is it? Matt, to pass ordinance 2016-18 on its second reading. Whatever will call vote?
Ian Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam?
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes. Are we needing to proceed with this?
It's up to you guys. Is there any objection to moving forward with doing a third and final reading?
Not by me.
I'll repeat. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2016-18 on its first reading by short title only. Second.
A motion and a second, place ordinance 2016-18 in its third reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2016-18, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016-18 on its first reading.
Second. A motion and a second from Cam and Wiley to adopt ordinance 2016-18. Whatever will call vote?
Ian Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Pollock, Cam?
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes. Ordinance 2016-18 has been adopted. Okay. That's everything on my agenda. On the mayor's report, I just want to briefly say that I want to thank Craig Koschel, I want to thank Linda Morris, Mary Free, all the people on the Califumpian staff that put on another great parade last night. Lot of people downtown. I'm not sure how many, but a lot of people. Good parade, good weather. So thank you to the chamber for hosting that event.
I'll pass that on. Thank you.
I'd say some of the non-local politicians that have been out doing parades all year long.
Are impressed by them.
Like, they, they're impressed. But this is like the biggest one that they've seen, and they like to come to, not just because it's the last one, but...
Mayor, with all the praises for the parade, I did have concern that the city had no lights on this side of town.
Yeah, I had some...
Tell the public they're not necessarily our lights.
No, well, I, yeah, Bob, I had a complaint today from a resident that coming out of Stratton, it was very dark, all in that whole area, okay? Well, the reason for that is because of the 224 raising that's going to happen. That actually is already happening, and the right-of-way, we had to clear the right-of-way of lights by the end of September, I think, wasn't it, Jeremy?
The end of September, I had, had a meeting with AEC and the conversation, we were up at the...
End dot.
End dot. We may be able to put one or two lights back up just to kind of help the intersection of Interstate 224, possibly one or, just to kind of help during construction. It's not going to be a tremendous amount of light, but it would be more of a safety feature.
No.
It's a lot of what's going to go on is this Thursday, you see a lot of the new poles out there already.
Right.
That are already up. This Thursday night at 11:00 at night to 4:00 a.m., they're going to be switching everything over. So once they get everything switched over to the new poles, which there will be a few outages, not a lot, but there will be a few outages, then we can sit down and really look at, okay, do we think that we'd really need a light here or here? Just a kind of bias in the eye. We are having that conversation, and I think I really have that all worked out at this point, but until they get switched over to the new poles, you know, our hands are really tied at this point.
And right now, I mean, there's no lights from east of the bridge all the way to the high school on 224.
Right.
So...
There was, there's, you know, there's a amount of light and stark left, but there is some dark intersections up.
Yeah.
We're looking to do something to what the new day was.
But thanks for bringing that up, Matt. That's the answer to the question, is because of the right-of-way clearance for the raising of 224.
Greg, one thing, I just wanted to thank the police department and the fire department and the county police officers for traffic control last night. I think they did a fantastic job. I will hopefully, being on that committee, work with you a little better next year on the planning so we know exactly where the people need to be with the parking areas. But thanks again, guys, you really did a bang-up job. Appreciate it.
Which, he took the words out of my mouth. I was, you were the next ones I was going to... And then I want to thank Melissa, I think everybody in here probably is aware of what we did last night up in front of City Hall as far as surprising a family with their daughter returning home from the Middle East after being gone for six months. That was awesome. It was really, really awesome. And Melissa, and mostly Melissa, has been working on that with a friend of Natalie Sanner. Her name is Abby Foster. And between Abby and Melissa, they coordinated how it was all going to be pulled off to surprise her parents, and it worked to the T. So that was really, really cool. So thank you, Melissa. And also publicly here, let me thank Matt Burning. That's the brother-in-law of Natalie. That's who we had in on the secret, and he helped set the whole thing up for us, so...
Good job.
Yep. That's all I have. How about...
Thank you, Melissa.
How about you? Yep.
It worked.
There were a lot of cheers out in front of City Hall last night when she came, when she got out of that truck. It was just really cool. Dan?
Hello?
Greg?
Hello.
Les?
We're just started today. We're in the midst of our survival live evening house down at Safety Park. For the next two weeks, we'll have all of the... For the next two weeks, we'll have all of the public and barocules in the county will be taking their fourth graders through that, somewhere between twelve and thirteen hundred kids will go through, and so we'll pooh-silly with that for the next couple of weeks. So, you know, it's a great opportunity to get a chance just to stop in, or if you have a child or grandchild in fourth grade, and just wanna go through with them, it really is a pretty cool experience for them, and we're in like, this is probably close to being twenty years that we've done this, so, you know, it's a pretty good program.
Okay, thanks, Les. Jeremy?
Um, we're lacking a couple of areas on paving, in the last round of paving, Bolden Street and Road Avenue, and the railroad crossing approaches on Washington, received word a few hours ago that that work will be completed on or before November of the sixteenth, so we're really kinda looking forward to getting that taken care of, so you, you know, ready to put back together before fall. Leaf collection is continuing, just please use the warm days here that we're having, if you have leaves, you can get a hospital, you guys can be around, it's pretty quick to get it picked up.
Can I ask Jeremy a question this morning? And he gave me an answer, and I'm sure it's a question that some others may get asked from time to time, and that is, we're still mowing yards, yes, it's November, but we're still mowing yards, and yes, grass clippings can be put right in with your leaves, so when they come along to pick up leaves, they'll pick up grass at the same time.
Also, with that note, some of the new housing additions, if you not have leaves, and you wanna get rid of your grass, drop those sites over twenty-four hours, day seven, day's late, if someone wants to, doesn't wanna wait on us to drop off their yard waste.
Did you wanna say something about Master Drive?
Correct, correct. Tonight, or actually, past several months, I've been working on Master Drive project, and as most of you know, it's been an ongoing issue of Master Drive, it's near range. Tonight, I presented a plan in Board of Works, keep that project underway. Hopefully, within the month of December, we will get out, we'll bend to a contractor, and hopefully, we can get the project completed, at least the first phase with the sewer, storm sewer, and the water main replacement, that might, probably, march right there. Is what our target would be. It could be a nice project.
Do we need to prepare that? Counsel, do we need to...
That improvement will also affect two of Exode, Lewis, and Exavon also, block the block storm sewer. For the central water main replacement on Washington, up to Ten Street.
You don't care about that, do you, Bob?
I'm ready, it's my work. We're a contract. We don't have time to go back.
Two more weeks at the most, maybe sooner, but two more weeks.
Slow down.
Bill?
Slow down. Sorry. I don't know. We go ahead and thank Bungie and their management for the email that we've received, stating that they're going forward with the quiet zone, and they've already decided to rearrange some of their switching schedule to later in the morning, so that they're not using the forms early in the morning.
Right.
And is that okay?
Sure. Yeah. I don't have the email handy, though.
I had it, I had it, but I don't either, but at least they've, they're doing something, and it's really nice that Bungie went forward and is doing something, and that they're proceeding, trying to work with the railroad on a quiet zone, and they kinda took it out of our hands, which is nice.
Yeah, that was more in the mornings, though, where we, you know, the evenings is another, another whole issue, so...
Right, well, whatever they can offer us.
Yeah.
Help.
If there's anything we can do to help the situation too, we're glad to, so, all right.
I just didn't know if I could say that, or...
Yep. You said it.
I said it.
You said it.
You watch what you say anymore.
What was that?
He said, "You watch what you say."
You don't say it anymore.
You got there.
And...
That's why I said it.
Melissa? Just for the record, Jeremy, you did say at the Board of Works meeting that as far as paving, Bowman, Froat, and the approaches on Washington Street, Wayne Asphalt is the contractor, and they've contacted you and said that by November sixteenth, that timeframe or sooner?
Or on or before November sixteen.
Okay. Just for the record, okay? Comments from the public? Comments from Tim?
Go Cubs.
Yeah?
They were here then.
Phyllis? Phyllis says, "Do it."